Patrick McGovern, President.
Paul Pacheco, President.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Today is Tuesday, May 21st, 2024, 4:30. This is a regular meeting for the Board of Health. It is being recorded to be viewed on YouTube.
Patrick McGovern, President.
Paul Pacheco, President.
Pledge of Allegiance.
This town nurse?
Nice to see you guys. I missed you guys. So I don't have time. I recently reached out to DR. They have a wellness committee. I believe this is a statewide initiative because I was served on it in Norton as well as Middleborough. So I reached out to them and let them know that I'm familiar with it. I've worked on them if they wanted me to be involved. So they have. So I'm hoping to join the first one in June. Their May one was tonight and I picked you guys over them. So I'll go there. I'll be at the Strawberry Festival in a couple of weeks with a table as I usually do with just some health-related stuff. As they keep putting on Facebook, we do have the blood drive that we're partnering with the police department in July, July 13th. It's from eight to one. And there is a QR code as well as a link online for people to sign up. So I'm hoping we get more people. It's a little low right now, but I'll see it a little bit higher. And then the last thing is I'll be going over to the middle school next month to, for Career Day, kind of speak on a little bit about what the health department does and what I do move in it. So that's about it.
Thank you.
Oh, there was one important thing. I almost forgot. So the Public Health Excellence Grant you guys are familiar with. So we had recently had talks with North Attleboro because they couldn't take on the employees because they have unions. And it was very difficult for them to bring in these employees for these grants. So we had discussions that Dyson was going to be the employees and they were going to be all the other aspects, managing the employees, all stuff like that. But it's just come to light that we're not going to take on that responsibility. I don't think we're there. And I just think that it's not something that we should be asking one of the smaller towns in that grant. I mean, Attleboro's in there, Taunton's in there as well as North Attleboro. One of these other bigger towns needs to do the heavy lifting. So we're no longer going down that route, though we're still involved in the grant as we have been. We're just not going to be housing any employees.
Okay, sounds good.
Health Director?
Everybody, James Agia, Health Director. Just a couple of things to report. The budget cycle is going through. It's now, we'll go in front of the taxpayers for approval in early June. Nothing that I'm aware of has changed on the budget. There are some town administrative recommendations which lower some of the line items. We want to try to balance things out for this fiscal year. The only thing I did find that I do want to share with the board is in doing my diligence with the budget, the rubbish disposal and trash disposal rates, including recycling, are not published until the start of the fiscal year. So it's hard. I know in years past, it seems like the Board of Health has always been last to the table with their budgets. And with the exception of those two lines, everything else can be calculated. But those two lines are somewhat a fear of the unknown. So what I did this year was I advised everyone to increase it by 10%. That's based on discussions with industry professionals that there wouldn't be any significant increase in disposal cost. However, I want everyone to know until we get those rates, we really don't know what the line item will be. So in talking with the financial team here, they now understand the process. We'll put the number in, we'll hope for the best. If for some reason there's a spike in disposal rates, then we'll have to revisit that line in the fall so that we make sure we have enough money in the budget to take care of the solid waste program.
Okay. Did the financial scheme try to cut that at all?
No, no, none of those lines. There were only a few lines that were cut, mostly smaller lines like professional technical, things of that nature. I believe the Board of Health member stipend was, was reduced from the request by the Board of Health. So, but other than that, it was, there was no major cuts.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions?
All right, Health Agent. You have anything?
I have something.
Anyone, Director? Nothing? Okay, so review, discuss, and act on overdue trash bag businesses. How are we sitting with that? Did we get the second letter out to them?
We did not.
Yeah, we started, I guess.
Presuming you're referring to the letter to the person who had company with the highest balance.
Yes.
We did not send the letter out. I would, I would like the board to act tonight to have that letter sent out.
Okay.
I will just change the language of the letters tightly based on the last letter that was written, but I think the language of the last letter was perfect.
Okay.
Unless you disagree.
I'd have to see the last letter again.
Okay, well, before we, before we say that, I'll, I'll make sure that we see it, obviously, and then the chairman will sign it. The, I believe that's to sign the last one, correct? Yeah. We, we did get some response from the last letter, so I'm hoping the same thing will happen here.
Right.
But they, they, they seem to be somewhat lax in paying kindly.
Can I get a motion to move forward with them, lateral contingent, that they'll run by both of us?
Yeah, so since the last time we've talked about this and we haven't gotten anything, when was last payment received?
No, we, we have.
We have something.
We have.
Just sometimes it'll be three weeks before I get one and then I'll get two.
Right.
And then it'll be three weeks before I get another one. And they don't, they're not paying in order. We still have all them.
Do we start putting invoice numbers on them?
Since they requested that.
Yeah, right. And then they're still not putting them in order.
And everything that we've had up to date, have we followed their process on?
This time when I did the, went into their portal to open the ticket, it took a lot longer for me to get the notification back saying that my case was created. Last time I did it, it was like instant. This time it was like two weeks before I got that verification.
I'm hoping that, they, they were recently acquired by a logic company. So I'm hoping that as the time goes on, they'll refine their operating processes, but right now we're cutting up unfortunately the costs.
But I think that would change it three years ago.
It was a little bit less than that, but, but yeah. Most of the local smaller companies are, I mean, there are some balances, but most of them are.
All right, I'll make a motion to send a letter to that company pending the letter be reviewed by the Board of Health prior to sending it out.
I'll step down, second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, review, discuss, and act potential health concerns regarding farming activities at 2651 Pleasant. Are you familiar with that?
It will be appropriate with your permission, Mr. Chairman, to interread the letters into the record.
Sure.
So that's, so this is a letter written by our office manager. This was when the complaint came in, at least most recent complaint came in, stated April 23rd, 2024. A woman by the name of Mrs. Boudreaux came into the health department. She wanted to be added to the upcoming agenda. She stated that she was on vacation. Her daughter tried to attend the meeting, but unfortunately couldn't. They, they dropped off some updated photos regarding the adjacent property, I'm presuming it's adjacent property, regarding the farming activities that are ongoing there. And they were informed that this meeting on May 21st would be held and they were encouraged to come. Obviously, it's on the agenda and I believe some people here from the neighborhood. The, the background slightly on this is that the owners of 2631 Pleasant Street, which I believe one of the owners is here, they have farming activities going on. There's agricultural, there's some animals that are there, and the animal inspectors bring to the property. So the concern that I'm hearing from the neighbors, and I'm sure they'll get their chance to speak, is that they feel that the activities that are ongoing at the property potentially could be a health concern. So the reason is before us tonight is to hear what is ongoing there, hear the concerns from the neighbors, and then it's up to the board to make a determination as to whether or not they think there are health concerns there.
Okay.
As a, as a preface, I will let you know, in, in your packet, there are several letters. At the press, I asked the animal, the animal inspector, the agribusiness commission to weigh in. They did submit a letter to us, which I believe you've had a chance to read. We've had it for a couple of months now. There's a letter from the animal inspector, there's a letter from the health agent. All three letters are, all seem to be in unison that they don't feel the activities there are in violation of any regulations or laws.
Okay.
So, but obviously, we're here to try to figure out whether any exist and I would just ask that we hear the people.
Okay. Who was the person that complained?
I'm sorry?
Could you come up and explain to us?
The property, it's not draining anymore. The water is just stays, it doesn't go anywhere. I do believe that there should be some kind of drainage down there. And right now it's fine, the, the smell and everything, but in the summertime when that water does start drying up, it's going to get awful down there. You can't even go outside because of the smell. I've heard that people can't even turn on their air conditioners in the middle of summer because the smell comes through the air conditioners. And it's a concern. I take care of a lady that's 88 years old and if she wants to go outside, she's not going to be able to. And I just feel like it is a health concern.
Now, you said, you think that the property should have a drain on it?
Yes, they should have a drain on, on that property, yes.
But then you said when the water does drain away, it smells worse.
In, in the middle of summer, yes.
So.
But it's still quite full now.
I don't think we can make this, a decision on whether the water gets drained off or not. That's conservation. They'd have to deal with any waterways. We don't have to stick it over that.
But in the summertime, it really gets bad down there. It does. And then the noise from all the, the animals making noise and everything, when you, your windows open, you can't. It's terrible. It, it is, it's miserable. I don't understand how this town can allow one resident to make so many residents miserable. Something needs to be done.
Well, it's the right.
Everybody complains about them.
They're, they're not the only farm in town. And I'm sure the other farms have smells that carry on to the neighborhoods. Anything else you'd like to say?
No.
Anybody here represent the property?
What was the question?
Do you represent the property?
I live at the property.
Can you come up here and speak?
To, to what?
To what your feelings are on what the complaint is.
Sure, to the light. You know, Harrow, 2651 Pleasant Street. I do have a farm. I use my farm for food. That's how we get majority of the food that we eat. I mean, it might smell, it might not smell. It's kind of, that's what it is. Animals make noise. We're in a farming community. As Jim stated, we've had multiple inspections come out. The health department has previously come out to the property. The building inspectors come out to the property, MSPA. CAs come out, but like, we've had multiple inspections. Everything's been compliant. I'm really just here tonight to see if there's anything that we're out of compliance on so we can move forward to bring those things into compliance. There's literally nothing we can do about the water. The property is surrounded by roads on all sides. There's, because the roads are private roads, there's no drainage bringing the water from the property out. We're also not the only property that floods in the area. So we would love it if all the water in the area could be drained away. That's all.
Thank you. Stacy, do you have anything? Of course.
No, I think it's been covered. Animals make noise, they smell in the summer. She has a right to have a farm, just like anybody else has a right to have a farm. And yes, they do smell more in the summer. I used to live right next to a farm on Main Street. You always knew when the animals had different feed and all that kind of stuff because it smelled different. So we all have a right to farm community.
Yep.
So they do have their right to have their farm. And as she said, MSPCA was out there, nothing was wrong. I've been, I've opted yearly to inspect and I've never found anything wrong. Yes, there's water there, it's always been water there.
Yep. Okay, so do you feel there's any health violation?
I do not.
Is there anything that you can do to find that?
Nothing I can do.
Okay.
I have something to say.
Okay, you want to come speak?
What is the minimum amount of acreage to have a farm here? Is there a minimum?
Five acres unless it's before zoning.
When was zoning?
When does that zoning change?
Actually, there's been several changes to that. So there's a couple of different protections for this farm. One is it was pre-existing. Two is that the Mass General Watchout, the 48, reduced the five acres to two acres. And then the townspeople voted, I forget the exact year, to make this a right to farm community, which basically is much more lenient than all of the other regulations in state. So although I understand your concern, when Dyson decided to become a right to farm community, basically, they were saying that farming is something that we'll embrace. I did, through the public hearings, make some points about concerns with that, being a right to farm community.
Because the property is not even one acre.
Right. I'm trying to explain to you that I, I brought up concerns because I knew calls would come in. One of the things that the right to farm community does, by law does, is it actually accepts any noise activity from the farm, regardless of the hour of day.
I'm not worried about the noise. I'm worried about the health risk from the birds they have there. Birds carry salmonella, E. coli, that lives in the soil for months, contaminates the soil, contaminates the river that's right there, contaminating drinking water, contaminating all the water for all the animals in the area. It's bringing rats into the area that we have to exterminate because they're coming into the house. It's holding a ton of water, which is causing a ton more water to stay in the neighboring houses, which is causing the 88-year-old woman's house to basically be washed out from underneath itself. It, this is disgusting. It stinks down there. It's bacteria floating around in the air. Do you guys know what poultry feces does?
That's what we're trying to determine is to whether or not if this health outage.
Come spend a weekend down there. Come spend an afternoon down there in the middle of the summer.
Well, the difference between a quality of life, which I'm not saying is not important, and whether or not there's a health outage.
It is, it, it's a health risk. It's a serious health risk.
So I'm not aware of any houses on Wells down there, I believe.
The water goes right from their cages, right into the back, and it flows right over the street and runs into the river. Everything, everything.
So the concern, the, the farm didn't create the water issue. The water outage creates this thing and it's exacerbating.
Not like that, it wasn't.
Climate change.
It was not like that. I lived there for a long time.
Right, but we've also, we're, we're also seeing changes in the climate. We had periods of rain since January, it's just moving. But it's whether or not the farming activities coupled with the neighborhood is causing the health risks. That's, that's what we need to determine.
Monroe's 2635 Park Avenue. This was the worst year because that's stagnant water and there's like 30 geese in there and their feces is in that water and it's flowing across Park Avenue through my, into the river. So I don't think that's right. But this year, in the beginning of May, the clouds of mosquitoes all around my car. I went away for two weeks and they're not there now, so I don't know if they sprayed. But I think a couple, they mentioned there's no drainage. But the town had proposed drainage at the Conservation Commission and they cited drainage improvements to relieve a public health issue. That's what they listed as. And the owner blocked it. It would relieve the issue, would mitigate the issue. And also the, the yard has been declared wetland. So that's going to help too, because that's going to start growing. So those are the two things. The wetlands is good and if you can get that drainage completed, then we would at least mitigate the problem. I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, go ahead.
As you're aware, I was typical part of that perception. But the drainage was proposed on prior property. The town doesn't own those roadways. So we were not allowed to put the drainage in unless we have permission for the property.
It blocked us, so.
So whether or not they still feel that way, I don't know.
Would be to their benefit.
And whether or not the town is still willing to drain it, I don't know.
Tom, excuse me.
Yes.
You said go through your property also?
Yes, this year, this is the freshman across the road, because it was an exception.
Right, it was.
And into the river. And you got 30 geese in there, they're 24/7. You know how, you ever have a goose, goose in your yard?
No, I don't.
See how much.
I'm just trying to figure solutions for the problem. Would you be against them putting a pipe through your property to, so it doesn't run?
They allow that.
We can't do that, sir.
We can't?
No, because Tom lives on the river.
Yeah.
We can't drain it off into the river. We can't drain it off into what's called an inland marsh, a wetland where the salt water can be cleaned. So the drainage is going to be put in actually on Pleasant Street and drain it into the existing town infrastructure, which went into the salt marsh.
The thing would be worse, going up to the river?
I'd love to put it through the river, but we can't do that.
It's supposed to be anywhere though.
So it sounds like the only chance, taking the problem and putting it across the street.
Well, the way the salt water mitigation works is the salt marsh, because of the vegetation, the plantings, et cetera, natural plantings, it actually cleans the water as it runs through the top. That's, that's the whole attempt.
So what properties do we have to go through to get that way?
Just the subject property and town across.
And the town's already approved it?
We did years ago. I'd have to dust that off.
Okay.
So it's 2021. So three years, and they said it was still good for three years. I asked because it got stopped. There's also Bristol County mosquito control came down and they were going to do something to mitigate the issue and the owner stopped that. So they're not trying to be good neighbors. There are solutions, but all the solutions keep getting blocked. And I don't know why, because it would help them too, it would benefit them.
Do you have a problem with your property being able to drain off?
Is, do I have a problem or is there a problem?
Do, do you have a problem?
It is what it is. You bought it, it was wet, it's still wet, it's always going to be wet.
Well, if the town would have put in a drain to alleviate the problem so that it would drain out and dry?
See, the Conservation Commission told us that because it's a wetland, they'd be able to install a drain that would lower the water by a few inches. So it's, it would still be wet. It would not, it's not like the option is a puddle or no puddle. The option is a puddle or a slightly smaller puddle. So.
All right, no, I was, I was thinking it was going to drain it right off.
No, it would not, the, we were told because it's wetlands, they would have to maintain the wetness of the area.
Anything to mitigate?
I, I, I may, I agree with that statement. However, what the drain was going to do was stop the solvent flooding, which then caused it to overtop the roadways and go into the river and into adjacent property. So your statement is correct. It won't completely drain it off, but it would stop the major flooding.
And it would take the surface off?
Correct.
So you know it was a couple of inches, would you be, would you be objective to that?
That doesn't benefit me at all.
It benefits by having a. It, uh, benefits by having your property clean?
It's not really clean, it's only a couple inches. We wouldn't, it doesn't benefit us.
Well, if, if everything washed across the street and was settled in the salt, in the, the marsh, it wouldn't be in here yet. So it wouldn't be a benefit because it'd be flowing, and it's going to probably take everything that's flowing off the top and keep it clean.
The benefit is not worth it at this current time. If it were us, it would push it on the street. For us, if the, we're able to drain the entire puddle, we would be happy. But it does not really be reconsidered a big problem, which is the entire wet backyard.
I've been there since nineteen eighty-five, and it, it was never this bad. It's just gotten worse, and I know climate change is going to be, but they, a lot of trees died in that area mysteriously. So now we need to regrow, and they have to plant four trees, the conservation commission said. Probably needs more, but at least that had helped. We're just looking for a mitigating solution. And obviously, they don't seem to want to mitigate the issue.
Yeah.
I don't know why. Doesn't make sense. So.
The roads over there are going to start deteriorating faster. Water on both sides.
I mean, we, we have little children there, we have special needs kids, we have elderly. I mean, I don't think it's a good, I, it is a health issue. And the space commission called it a public health issue. This town called, called it that themselves.
How far is the wetland on her property from the edge of the street?
Well, I've never seen a delineated wetland. Um, I, I personally, I'm, I'm not a botanist, but I can tell you that. Um, it's not a wetland by nature's design. It's a wetland because of the water that stays on the property. So it's becoming a developing wetland. Soil is a bit hybrid there. Um, however, that said, I understand that the Wetlands Protection Act does, you know, protect areas that are even in development. So I can see why the conservation commission would say that. Um, to answer your question directly, the wetland across the street from, um, the house, the subject house, is actually closer than the wetland in the rear. Wetland in the rear is pretty far away.
Um, well, my thought of the reason I asked the question was, if we have a concern about it washing the roadways away, and we could have the town not go on her property, but install a catch basin on the road, so that when the levels come up, it goes right down and over. That way, we wouldn't be on her property at all, and we'd be protecting town roads. We'd have to give it to highway department. Because you probably know more about than I do, Tom. The, the roads there, they're, they're not public roads, right?
No, they're private. But I would be happy with it, they followed through on that drain basin, and they kept it as wetland, so it'll grow. I think that'll at least alleviate the problem, and they can have their farm, and at least nature will be, uh, more beneficial. It won't be such a hazard as it is now.
Okay.
We have to have the cooperation, which we're not getting.
Well, I understand we're not getting the cooperation. However, if we're talking about town roads, I understand they're not public roads, but they still have access for you guys to get to your houses. Highway trucks and ambulances still have to get down there. And if the runoff is causing a problem to the road, I think that we should get a hold of the highway department, have further discussion with him about it, and see, maybe we go up to Jim and take a look at it with him, and see where we can on public property, put in a drain.
If, if I may, we went through this the last time. Unfortunately, the only public property there is Pleasant Street, roadway layout. There is no other public property in that area. All of the property in that area is privately owned. Streets do not belong to them. I understand what you're saying. We maintain them because we need police, fire, and emergency vehicles to get through, and you're taxpayers, the road should be maintained. But they're not town roads. They don't belong to the town, right? So anything we do down there has to have permission from the adjacent property owners. Wherever the drain is installed, the property owner where the drain is installed would have to give the town permission, and the property owner's all the way to Pleasant Street would have to give us permission. Where Tom lives is, is probably four hundred feet from Pleasant Street.
Right.
We do this. So.
Yeah, but I don't need a drain. They, they need the drain. I don't need it.
I don't, but I think the chairman is trying to find some resolve. Um, if the property owner on Pleasant Street is not willing to put the drain in, is there a drain that can go in somewhere else?
Yeah, well, yeah, where else could we put a drain?
There's another property that's, uh, abandoned, they're trying to sell it. Couldn't they put a drain through that property?
As long as we can get permission, but.
Sure, he would give permission. And they could go across Beach Street over to their side of the road, and then we wouldn't have to bother with them.
Right.
Is that possible?
I would like to still have a discussion with Tom about this.
Okay.
Because I, I understand that it's not a public road. However, there's got to be some type of gray area where we have to have police and fire get down there, and the ambulance, we maintain, we plow the road, even though we don't have to. If people go to get a mortgage, their address is, what, what is your address?
Twenty-six thirty-five Park Avenue.
Well, there is a Park Avenue. So it is a street.
It's a pick the street. But it's a street.
But it's a street.
Does anybody culture that water at all? I mean, that must be crazy amount of bacteria.
There's no triggering mechanism to do that. Nobody has wells in the area. Everybody's on municipal water service.
Going to the river, though, doesn't that trigger something?
Not from a local standpoint, no. The Tom River is not public water source. And it's hard to, it's hard to, I, I understand what you're saying, but, you know, Tom River gets water, you know, runoff from all sources.
The difference is, is the stagnant water with at least thirty geese. I don't know how many they have. I mean, you have, can you imagine how much feces is in that water? I, I can't even think of it, because a goose will come in my yard and it's covered with goose, uh.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, and I wasn't going to use this, um, example, but I will. I, I live in West Point, West Point Point is a, it's a very affluent area. And my business brought me to that area, and I could not believe the amount of feces from wild geese that were in this person's yard. It was, it was mind-boggling to see it.
Right.
So I can understand what you're saying. Um, however, that said, where do we make the, draw the line between a wild?
A wild geese come and go. But the MSPC, they.
Well, how much of the people on West Point Point, because they're, and they're all summer.
Plus there are ways to, uh, stop them.
No, excuse me.
Yep.
What you're saying, Jim, I agree. And I'm not blowing it off, but Jim made a good point. If you go down Lincoln Avenue, a friend of mine's mother was running the water, you go in the backyard, there's geese all over the place. There's a little park. It's, you don't even want to walk there.
But there are ways to prevent geese from coming in your area if you choose to, but we, we don't have any choice.
No, I understand that, but we also chose to be a right-to-farm community. And that was a public hearing, where people, taxpayers came out, voted. So, and I, through all of the public meetings, I was very vocal about what that meant. And I've been up anti-farm. I just wanted everyone to know what that meant.
Right.
And it was passed, so that tells me the taxpayer is one of us.
But we're dealing with the consequences, and yeah, I didn't see any of that, so now we got the consequences apparently. But it seems like something should be done, needs to be done. I dispute that it's not a public health issue, because I, I worked in a hospital. I know a bacteria grow in stagnant water, and it's not health.
I'm not disagreeing with you, all of you guys. However, we don't know what the levels are allowed on a farm.
Yeah, maybe, maybe there should be.
No, I, I know, but yeah, I mean, chicken farms, you know.
There's not stagnant water that flows into other people's yards.
Right, and that's why I'd like to get with Tom, let me meet you with you and Jim, we're down there. I haven't physically seen the property. I know where you live. Um, I used to be in your neighbor's house a lot, David. And I've seen the floodings there. Uh, I've seen it flood from that yard right over the whole, the whole road, completely.
We have a very tolerant neighborhood. It's just, we need some cooperation to mitigate it. That's what we're looking for.
Right.
And if the solution was there, and it wasn't taken advantage. Anyhow.
Thank you. One question. You said that there's nothing in it for you, no benefit for you. What type of a benefit would you like?
We'd like the entire thing to be drained.
You'd like the entire thing to be drained?
Absolutely.
So that would have to go to conservation for that, correct? You have any more? Pat, you need to rush this?
Nope.
Jim?
Uh, thank you.
Well, I think. I think, yeah, we need to get with Tom, find out the regulations out on the paper roads, what we can do, what we can't do, and, uh, go from there.
Appreciate any help you can give us.
We will be down to see you, I promise you that. So, uh, can I get a motion to table this until we can get some investigation going on, and talk with highway departments, see what type of solutions may be possible?
Uh, I'll make a motion to table the potential health concerns regarding farming activities at twenty-six fifty-one Pleasant Street until we can investigate further.
I'll step down a second.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. We'll wait out, we'll take a look at it. Okay, now, review discussing that, Papa Squash pool, a pool waiver. Can I come up?
Lieutenant.
Your name?
I, uh, Rich Gunther. I'm twenty-one twenty Chestnut Street. I'm also the certified pool operator for Papa Squash Community Club. And, uh, here, I'm here, uh, to, um, ask for a waiver for one oh five C M R four thirty-five forty-six, to modify the provision of turnover rate, set forth in one oh five C M R four thirty-five thirty-two, water quality maintenance, part one, eh. I could read the whole thing if you like, or I could just go through a synopsis of it. All right, um, currently, for a public and semi-public pool, it's required that the water be turned over, uh, four times in a twenty-four-hour period. All right, we have a forty-seven thousand one hundred and sixty-seven gallon pool. Um, that requires a turnover rate of about ninety-seven gallons, uh, a minute to be able to turn it over four times a day. Uh, we haven't been able to get to that point because of the way the piping has been. We have one and a half inch piping at a minute. To be able to provide full out, get to ninety-seven gallons a minute turnover, we'd have to rip everything out and put in just too much pipe all the way around. All right, we do have some too much piping in there, but again, uh, we're constricted by the one and a half sections that we do have. Um, what we did, we, we've been running at about seventy gallons a minute, as opposed to ninety-seven. So we're up there. We're at about two-thirds. What we did do is we upgraded our pump motor from one and a half horsepower motor to a two and a half horsepower, or two point two horsepower motor, running a two-twenty. It's much more efficient and pumps a lot more. At this point, that particular pump gets us up to at least eighty. Currently, most of the time eighty-five, and there has been a couple of times that have actually been up at about ninety-five. So we're very, very close to the full turnover rate. Um, the reason we're asking for this variance, uh, is, uh, well, first of all, because if we had to rip everything out and try to put anything back in, we don't have the money for it. And, uh, that would possibly be manifest injustice under the law. So what we have done, and what has been successful, at least we believe it's been successful over the past, um, since twenty-seventeen, is we have had a variance, a letter in, saying, okay, uh, our mitigation for the full turnover would be to reduce the number of, uh, bathers allowed in the pool at any one time. We are allowed, because of the size of the pool, we're allowed fifty-three, uh, people in a pool. Fifty-three bathers in this pool, which would be crowded. Um, we never had that. So what we have done, and what was approved in the past, was to drop that to thirty-three maximum. Again, when you have less people in the pool, you have less particulates, less possible pollutants. Um, and the water has been kept to a very high standard. Very few, any issues at all. I maintain that, I, I like to have a standard of excellence with that. If it's not worth doing, don't do it at all. And we have maintained that, and I think our records have shown that over the years, we've been able to do that.
How often do you test it?
Uh, test at least once a day.
Once a day?
Usually twice a day.
Wow.
Um, and usually, our, our stuff doesn't vary that much, but I still want to get out there and make sure that it's, that's up to snuff at all times. So, uh, at least once in the afternoon sometimes before work, up all over and do a test too.
Now, you have this running twenty-four hours a day?
We do. So this thing's turning over even in the middle of the night at this point.
Right.
Which, again, it, there's nothing allowed that says you have to have the signal twenty-four seven. It just has to have the capability of turning it over four times a day. But there's nothing that says you have to have it run in twenty-four hours a day, although at this point we don't. Which, again, is turning that water over and over and over in the middle of the night, clean water, making it cleaner.
Right, well, that's what I'm thinking.
Yes.
Probably nobody there up to five o'clock at night.
I've been there a couple of times at nine. It's nice, but there's almost never anybody there.
Yeah, so it's been all night long, so by the time the daytime comes, it's, how they had twelve, fourteen hours of filter?
It, it does, and then it's, of course, it's running when people are there. And the most, most times, you only have about five or six people in the pool at any given time. The most I've ever seen, ever, I've been a member since about two thousand and six. It was twenty-one, and that was because there was a couple of birthday parts going on at one time. That was the max.
Yeah.
And that pool is supposed to be able to hold fifty, uh, fifty-three people. The reason the law's there is, of course, because when you're looking at pools, um, for urban communities and whatnot, you put a lot of people into the pool, you need to turn that pool water over, and I get it. But we have historically a lot less people. Uh, we could even drop that number from thirty-three down even more, but it, it, I think over time, since twenty-seventeen, we've maintained a very high standard. And I think the mitigation we've put in by having a, uh, less bathers allowed in the pool has borne fruit, and I think it has been successful.
Do you have that posted for thirty-three people?
We do. Yes, we do.
All right, uh, thank you. Jim, you have any input?
Oh, I'm, I'm familiar with this establishment. I've, uh, visited this place, this location, as a building official, and as a health agent. I read through Mr. Gunther's, uh, letter supplemental. I vetted the calculations. I hear you're spot on. I concur with everything you said. In fact, um, I feel with the recent pump change, I would encourage the board, if they're still inclined, to leave the occupancy the same as it was, uh, which is a reduced amount from the fifty-three. But if they continue on this path of getting close to their turnover rate, I would even suggest next season, not this season, uh, that we maybe increase the number of occupants, if that's, uh, if that's something that would benefit you. But I think for now, with the recent pump change, I think we should see how the season goes. It sounds like we don't have, uh, the occupancy that would necessitate an increase this year. Uh, but maybe we can revisit it next year, and if everything stays on the right track, maybe we can give them one extra year. Possibly up to the board, but that would be my recommendation.
Thank you. It, it would be nice to be able to have the capacity. We'd like to have the membership to have the capacity as well.
Right. Helen, you, you're a pool expert. Certified in pools.
Helen is a certified pool operator.
I am.
Do you have any input? Okay. Do you, do you agree with him, I have?
I have one thing to add. What, what I'd like, uh, we've been coming to the board, uh, every year, since twenty-seventeen. What I'd like to be considered possibly is to have this letter, um, this variance in effect in perpetuity unless the board health deems otherwise. So we wouldn't have to come, we, we don't mind coming every year, but if we'd be able to have it until deemed otherwise, we'd like that. So that's requested.
Yeah. Well, we revisit that next year.
Very good.
But you can motion to approve the waiver?
Um, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the waiver for the Papa Squash Pool.
I'll step down a second.
Aye.
Aye. Your waiver has been granted. We'll see you next year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody get any other items recently not transpired to anybody? Oh, okay. Elizabeth, you want to see if Jonathan has any public input?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, you're not muted.
Okay, thank you. Um, first of all, I want to give you guys a positive, which is.
Okay, thank you. Um, first of all, I wanna give you guys a positive, which is, I'm starting to listen to different meetings, and in some of the cases, when they're on Zoom, I'm not hearing everyone who speaks. As you know, I've sent out an email about that recently, uh, to all the departments and, and chairs. And everyone I've listened to, I've been able to hear, or you, or they've come up to speak, so thank you for doing that. It's appreciated.
Welcome.
You're, you're following that already, obviously, tonight, which is great, and I've heard some of the other meetings in the past that I've listened to, and the same thing, for the most part, I've heard the same thing, so thank you for doing that. Um, my only question actually is, for, at least for today, is, I know in a few meetings ago, I think it was back in November, um, there was mention of, from your grant, purchasing picnic tables that were accessible, and determining the locations where they would be placed. And I wanted to ask for an update on that for two factors. One, um, as the ADA coordinator, I wanna make sure that those tables meet the accessible standards. I'm sure that, uh, Jim is doing his best to make sure that they do, but I would just like to know what is being ordered and what the heights are and so forth, and where the wheelchair accessibility would be for tables or benches. And second of all, in, in, in line with that same comment, where they would be placed, if that's been determined yet. Because again, accessibility is important based on where these are going to be placed.
No, none of that has been determined yet. We haven't even decided on the exact tables. That hasn't come up. But after a recent birthday cleanup, we found that we need more trash cans around here. Especially out in the backside of the field. We picked up three trash bagfuls of water bottles, people playing in playgrounds, so. No, that hasn't come up yet. Uh, that's gonna have to be reviewed. We could put that on the agenda for next month. Uh, how far away you have?
I, I, I have a list of grants, and I know we've had discussions in the past about this. However, I've been going one grant at a time. I just did the mattress container grant. Now I'm going to the water bottle grant that we acted on previously. Once I'm done with that, then we'll revisit this discussion.
Okay.
If you could just keep me informed, that would be great, especially, um, Jim, I'm sure you're gonna order the right tables that are accessible, you know, for, for wheelchairs and so forth, but if you could keep me informed with regard to location, um, so that I can make sure the locations are as accessible as possible as well, I'd appreciate it, before they're installed.
Will do.
Okay.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other public input? Okay, any correspondence? Elizabeth? All right, uh, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four?
I make the motion to approve the minutes from April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second it.
Aye.
Aye. It carries, we've discovered. Can I get a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.